I don't have the mouse.
I have the mouse, is that okay? Okay.
All right, good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session. It's Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, it's two oh three P M. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, we have Commissioner Carolina Mejia and Commissioner Emily Claus present. We're here till four thirty if needed, and public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County channel. First topic up this afternoon is the budget calendar. Nicole Martinez, I'm assuming will be going through that.
Yes, so I'm here today to speak with you, the Board, so thank you, Commissioner Ty, oh, Mensah, excuse me, to talk about the budget development calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five midterm. From what I understand, here at the county annually, when we get ready to go into the next fiscal year, we meet before you and get your approval on those dates, and if you have any suggestions on those dates. Before I jump right into the calendar, I do have like a brief overview of our budget process that we currently have here at the county, going into some of the R C Ws, the state laws that govern the budget process, and where some dates are set and encoded there, and we can't change them, and then others, we could look into if that was the decision of the Board. So the first slide here I just have is just the Thurston County budget process, and this is the budget process going through the total development of the budget. It does not follow suit for amendments, however, the amendment process does similar steps here. So the first thing I want to know is that the budget process for the Budget Office starts in January, and it doesn't end until December, so we have like a two weeks off, and then we start up again. So currently, right now, in fiscal services and H R, central services, and even in the I T department, they are gathering information to help with getting the internal service rates updated. So they've been starting that since January, they are already well along in that process, but you won't hear anything about internal service rates until June, so that's where it really kicks off for you, when you start seeing the implementation of, I guess, the works of everything we've put in work, it actually coming before you. So this schedule here before you, this little circle here, it starts in January, so January third, June, you have internal development of our rates, and then in June, we will present those indirect rates to you. But in July is when we'll have a call to budgets.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Forniero needs to be let in, just saw that, oh, sorry.
So in July is call to budgets, and this is governed by R C Ws, and so that'll be the first July, first date in July there, and then we'll go into department offices where they submit their budget requests. That date and that deadline will be outlined for departments and offices at the time of call to budgets. There will be a series of presentations and budget work sessions to help to develop the budget. Once we get the budget, once the departments submit their budget request, we have to submit all of their requests before you, so that will be at a budget meeting, and that'll be at a Commissioner meeting, a Board meeting, and then after we submit before you all of the requests that the departments have requested, we'll move into budget work sessions, which happen in September and October, with deliberations from you, we'll move into those in November, which is publishing the preliminary budget, we'll have budget hearings on that preliminary budget, and then certify the property tax and adopt the budget, so that's very high level. A lot of these steps here are governed by state law.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So all of that sounded a lot like the normal building the biennial budget process. Is there anything that's not in a midterm that we don't have to do, that's easier or simpler or not part of the process?
So a lot of the steps governed by state law are similar. What is different is the items in which we have decided to include in the midterm. So during a normal budget cycle is when all the departments have an opportunity to assess their programs and ask for new F T E, normally during a midterm, we don't ask for new F T E, we ask for changes within the budget that weren't anticipated. And Robin, I'm gonna look to you, because I know you have specific language around what is included in the midterm, so unanticipated receipts from federal grants, anything else I should add?
So Nicole didn't warn me that she was gonna ask me a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Not Robin.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I understand your answer, I mean, it's the, I understand that there's limited substance.
Right.
But my question, it sounds like the process, though, kind of follows the same track as it would be if we were, had the greater substantive, you know.
Right, what we've been advised, because the state law says that the state auditor will set a process for midterm review, and they haven't. There's nothing in the bar's manual that gives us guidance on what we should or should not do. So our attorneys have advised us that we should follow the same set of dates that we do if we had an annual process, so call the budget at the same time, deliver the budget to the Board that first Tuesday in September, the same, publish on the same dates, public hearings on the same dates. So the overarching structure, excuse me, is what Elizabeth has advised us to follow, even in a midterm year, but the way we consume a lot less time is limit the types of things that offices and departments are allowed to ask for, and do not have those Board work sessions with every office and department where they lay their budget out, and we cut a lot of time out of the process that way.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so then the next few slides we're gonna get to are going to be talking about the R C Ws. The first little paragraph here speaks about the biennial budget, that we are on a two-year budget cycle, we don't adopt one at a, one year at a time, we adopt two years, and then we have this mid-biennial review. I also wanted to lay out some pre-budget items, so these are identified in best practices and also encouraged in law, and one of those first bullets there is strategic planning sessions, so you'll have budget retreats, that's our strategic plan, they help guide the direction of the budget, so the budget, you put your numbers to what priorities you have, so that is identified as a pre-budget item for best practices, the capital facilities plan, which is in line with the capital improvement plan, so the budget is in line with the efforts of Public Works and Central Services, as well as C P A D to get the C I P together, and also the capital facilities plan, which goes into the capital budget. Another pre-budget item is updating the cost allocation formulas, so that is the indirect rates that I spoke to that start in January, and the last is updating financial data for forecasting, so as we get more information in, closing the file the year before. These are all budget items that we use as far as best practices, and also some state law, especially the C I P. So the revised Code of Washington to the R C W counties, as far as budget, is really underneath thirty-six forty, however, there are other areas within R C W that help govern our budget, but mainly, you'll see a lot of the statutes coming from thirty-six forty, so that's where that speaks to. And now we have over nine pages of R C Ws, and I won't bore you with going through every single one of them, but they are outlined here, if you wanted to know what statute is governing some of the decisions that we're making as far as when call to budget should be, you'll be able to see that. I tried to group them by our planning process, so like the first page is developing the preliminary one budget, so those are the budget requests that the departments submit to the Budget Office that the Budget Office will present to you, and then if you go forward into the next page, which is page three, that's building the preliminary two budget, and again, these are R C Ws that help govern that part of the process as far as when public hearings should be, how much time do we have to give notice to the public? And so that all builds the budget calendar and when we should structure those days. So then the last, page four here is the final budget, and this talks about when the budget needs to be adopted by, and when the property taxes should be certified, and this is all governed by R C Ws on when we need to certify the property tax, when we need to also, again, adopt the budget. I did want to know, as I was reviewing this, there were two R C Ws that I noticed that were incorrect, and so if you wanted to know what those are, you can let me know. On page six, eight point four, that R C W, there was a typo in the end, so it's actually R C W thirty-six forty dot one nine five instead of nine one five. And on page seven, nine point one, the step there, the R C W is actually thirty-six point thirty-two dot two ten, it's not forty, so those were typos that we noticed. So if there aren't any questions there, I would jump right into the calendar.
Questions on?
I have a question, and I don't know, I mean, I don't know how much time we have for this, and I don't want everyone to cringe at this thought, but I'm brand new to this and don't understand the budget process, so it would be helpful for me to kind of go through step by step, and maybe that's like a one-on-one meeting I should set up with you instead of having the whole board sit through that if they're already familiar with the process. But this is really helpful, so thank you for putting this together, because it's one, the budget is one of those major things that like the Board is responsible for, and I, there are so many details, so trying to wrap my head around it, this is really helpful for me. But would that be more appropriate to do in a one-on-one meeting, or is that something that we could go into a little bit here, should we wait till the end of the presentation?
So I'm willing to sit with you one-on-one, but that's up to the Board here if they'd like to go into that detail.
Well, Wayne's not, oh, wait, Wayne is here, I mean, I don't know, Wayne, if you think that that would be helpful too, I mean.
Right, what's, specifically, if what would be helpful?
Well, I don't know if you have the packet, but the budget process is outlined, and it has all the R C Ws that pertain to each step in the process, which is really helpful, and it goes through the whole entire year of the budget process. And I was asking Nicole if it would be, or the Board, if it would be more appropriate for me to review those steps with Nicole or the budget staff in person, one-on-one, or if we wanted to go into it a little bit in the meeting today. I didn't know how much time we had, it looks like we don't have a ton of stuff on the agenda.
I mean, I just, I, let's hear Nicole out, and then follow up as necessary.
Okay. Maybe the best way to tackle that is still looking at the budget calendar and then outlining what the R C Ws are as we go through that current, and if you have any questions, then I can just jump right into it.
I guess if it is any consolation, Chris, I've been here eight years, and I had, I just have to take staff at their word in most cases, because you'll never get it down to where you're really comfortable with it. That's kind of the bottom line, it's just, I don't know if anybody gets to where, unless they're a budget person.
We generally, we generally do, though, the Board of County Commissioners have walked them through this packet at least once, if not more than that, so, and it takes about an hour to get through all of it, so I think that we could set an hour specifically for any Commissioners who would like to, to go through the whole list.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, because I'm looking at it, and I mean, we might get to it in the calendar, so I don't want to take up too much time, but I just think that that would be really helpful for me, kind of go through it. If I were to read this on my own, I might just be lost, so.
I think the thing too is to understand that this calendar drives your briefing calendars tremendously, right? So as you see the uptick over the course of the year, it starts off slow, and then it starts to become more and more and more through the end of the year, so.
So then, if we look at the calendar, I'm starting with the section twenty-four, twenty-five, Amendment One. So Amendment One is making any changes that the departments didn't foresee against the two thousand and twenty-four budget, or maybe there was an error or a miskey, at that time, they'd be able to go before you and ask for those changes. So the first time, they're already underway with that process, and that entry is gonna close the end of March. The first review is proposed for April seventeenth with the Board, and then the next one is April twenty-ninth, so giving you two opportunities for the first time to see it, and then the second time to make decisions. Once decisions are made on April twenty-ninth, we'll post those intents in the Olympian, and then adoption for June fourth. So before you, we would be asking that you would be available April seventeenth, April twenty-ninth, and then June fourth to adopt it, and that's the Amendment One process.
A lot of Amendment One seems to be stuff that came from the legislative session. I mean, not being a lot, but there's stuff where, you know, legislature says sheriff has to do certain new process for background gun checks, and sheriff then comes in and says, I need three more people to do what the legislature just told me I have to do, and foresee, you know, on public defense or whatever, you know, some new, some, the assessor comes in and says, well, they just changed the eligibility requirements, now we're gonna have double the number of such-and-such applications, I need three more people to do that, couldn't have seen that coming, it was a legislative change in the early part of the year. So that's some of what we get, that seems a little bit out of cycle, but it relates to legislative changes.
Okay, I have a question on this part, so the public notice of intent to amend the budget occurs late May, and then June fourth, we adopt the amendment, but like for the change requests, I mean, we have all of our, all of our meetings are open to the public, but are there any other opportunities aside from that end of May period for the public to come in and give their opinion?
So from what I understand, the public at any time is available to reach the Board for, they through the public comments, right, to be able to submit something at any of these meetings that we're reviewing, they're also available to be here. There is not a public hearing with budget amendments per R C W, we just need to post them, so they do have opportunity to comment on the budget, but not in the public hearing forum.
Okay, is there any way we could, I mean, I don't know what the R C W says specifically about the timeline for that, but like, I'm looking at this and just thinking, it doesn't feel like a lot of time for people to really like look into it and watch meetings that they want to watch, and try to get informed on what to say if they want to give public comment. Is there any way that we could provide the public notice earlier than late May?
Well, I would add that the Budget Office impact started in two thousand and twenty-three. We have been uploading the requests that the departments are asking for on our website, so when they are finished entering them, April twenty-second, about early April, they will be available for the public to see it at that time, and then at these points, R C W governs that we have to post it two weeks before we're going to adopt it, so to post it earlier than that would push all the dates further up, so the second review, April twenty-ninth, would have to happen sooner.
Just to clarify, you said April twenty-second, did you mean March twenty-second for a question?
Yes, thank you.
So at that point in time, all the information, those change requests will be publicly available? Probably are, maybe one of our challenges, how do we get that information out to the public so they know they can have an opportunity to look?
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, and if we have like regulations around the public notice of intent, because it's a formal process, then maybe we could at least have our P I O team doing some sort of outreach, just even on social media or something, to let people know, to tune in, because then once we get to the time where it's, we issue the public notice, and then we adopt it a week or two later, that could cause people to feel like, well, now I have to scramble to find the information, and I don't know how to, I don't understand how to find it, and I know, like, we do put everything out there, but we also know it's out there, and most people don't, so just trying to find other ways to be more transparent about the budget so people can get involved, without placing undue burden on staff to have to respond to like hundreds and hundreds of inquiries. But I do think it's our responsibility as Commissioners to find avenues for the public to contribute their opinion, and then try to mitigate that impact it might have on staff, so we're not overburdening staff too.
So we can definitely work with P I O to notify the public that we posted the public, the budget request on the web. Again, it closes on March twenty-second, so we will look to posting them early April, we'll need some turnaround time, but we can do that.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
I think it also falls down on us as Commissioners, though, to be getting the information out there to the public, I mean, that is our role, and so whatever avenues that we have available and getting this information out to our constituents, I think now that there is five of us, it's gonna be easier than when it was three of us, and, but I know that, I have a newsletter that goes out, and I've always posted that information on there when we ever, whenever we have a budget amendment for, for the public.
I think it's also important to set the framework for what the budget changes are, right? Because we want to manage expectations, we can provide folks information, at the same time, do they think we're starting from scratch, and they have an opportunity to really affect it? I don't like this program, or I don't, not supportive of that, I wish you would invest in this one? So that's not the nature of these changes at that point in time, so we'd really want to say these are more administrative, they're more, so that we can, they know sort of what kind of comments they really can provide.
That is a good suggestion too, and then maybe with like the caveat of, if that's the kind of comment you want to provide, here's the way you can do that, like here's the avenue of doing that, even if it's just like email your Commissioner, so that people don't feel like we're putting up walls when we're trying to provide access.
Well, one thing they can do is they can always come to one of our open public meetings that are on Tuesdays and make public comment, we don't restrict them at the time that it's their turn to talk, I mean, they, they get to make that public comment, and maybe we should make that known to the public that, okay, so in this case, we're not having a public hearing specifically on the budget, but they can comment on that budget anytime we're having one of these public meetings, so, wherever we're taking comment.
I would have never thought that would be needed, but in other groups, they have public comment, like specifically about what's on the agenda.
About on the agenda, I know.
And we don't do that, and so maybe some people make that assumption, so I could make a comment, my preliminary statement, I could say any topic, you know, other than the, other than what's in these guidelines, any topic's fair game for public comment, but as long as there's something for trying to, I think, you're worried about just people understanding, you know, how they can plug in at some point. What's on here is about their opportunity to review, the final thing that we're proposing to, and that has to be necessarily pretty close to the time, because it takes all that time to get it all styled up. But if there's, but you're saying that like a month before that, there's something out there that could be seen, then that could be a more, you know, kind of a preliminary, P I O can say, hey, we're starting this process, and here's some preliminary requests from departments, and Commissioners won't post a final thing on, you know, May twenty-first or whatever, and that way, they could get themselves together, as Commissioner Claus was talking about, to kind of get plugged in and get the information they think they need.
I also think it's just, I mean, this process and the past years has been extremely burdensome just because of the systems that we have put in place, and I'm talking about the I T systems, the, and the E R P is supposedly going to alleviate some of these concerns if it ever goes through, but like that, that's the goal right here, to streamline that process, to make it more accessible, not only to our staff, but as well to the public, and we just haven't been able to get there, and I feel like once we have that actual system in place, I think it's, it's just gonna be more accessible to the public, it's gonna be, in a way, that's gonna be more understandable, and it's gonna be hopefully.
With the E R P?
Yes, yes.
I'm, I, may I, I would say I'm hopeful that it will be, there are some things that we're going through the design right now for the budget module that I'm hoping will help with transparency.
Someday, Robin, someday.
I have no doubt that the E R P, if everything plays out as we hope, will be extremely beneficial to staff, but Oracle made it clear at the very beginning that there is not a transparency piece.
But that's why we have the balance, what is it, Balance?
Balancing Act.
We have Balancing Act, we have Open Gov, we kept both of those, so that we can build on those.
And so, again, like, I feel like the burden on staff will be elevated, where we can use Balancing Act in a more productive way to create that outward facing, but right now, our budget team is so like, just.
Right, limited.
Limited, and the capabilities of the system aren't great, that a lot of it has to be manually done, that it takes a lot more staff time to focus on those things, and so, once there's that system upgrade, hopefully sometime.
That is the hope.
Then that will create different avenues for us to put more on Balancing Act and, and create kind of those, those tools.
Right, and we've talked quite a bit about, you know, how do we expand citizen engagement, what kind of, not only using Balancing Act and Open Gov, but also, you know, what more can we do to get the information out there?
Balancing Act tool is fun.
It is fun, it is kind of fun.
Yeah, and it should present a lot of opportunities.
Well, and it's, and Olympia School District has a survey out right now, which is, I looked at it this morning to see what, like, what tool they used, it's like, oh, this might be an interesting thing for us to try.
So, and also Jennifer has shown me some videos, some budget videos that some other places have done, so we could utilize the P I O to.
One of the, one of the things that Balancing Act does is they send best practices out that their other clients do, and I got one the other day, and I went to the P I O, I'm like, hey, is this something we can do? We have a new video guy, so, and I'm like, we can talk about it, and maybe that is something that we can do.
So um, if that's it for amendment one, I'm gonna go into the midterm. So it's uh, written here is twenty twenty-four year and amendment two, and then also twenty twenty-five midterm development. So we're grouping those two together. So we are closing twenty twenty-four. And then we are amending twenty twenty-five um, with that mid biennium review. And so the process here starts in January through June. We'll be developing the internal service rates. Um, the offices that are ahead of those um, internal service rates are essential services. HR, financial services and information technology. Um, I'm gonna jump to June um, twelve. And this is where you will have the briefing from those departments on those internal service rates. Um, at that time would be the first time you hear about the rates. You can approve them for us to start building the budget there. But I've also put in the following Monday there, June seventeenth. If that's the day you'd like it to come back for your official approval so that we can put it into the budget. Um. Internally, June twentieth, that's when we would have a rate day presentation. So that's basically sharing the rates with the offices inside. Um, so June twenty-seventh though is another key date for you. Um, or for inter internally, and that would be where we're gonna do a call to budgets and that is guided by RCW thirty-six forty-ten listed there. Um, and that's gonna be the kickoff. So the auditor, the county manager and all the fiscal staff will get together internally. And kick off the budget and that is when the offices know that um, there is a deadline now to when you have to get your budget request in and when those are due. Um. Then uh, there is a lot that transpires from kickoff internally to when you actually see that information. Um, and so if we jumped from June twenty-seventh all the way to August twenty-eighth. That is when I would be submitting information to the clerk of the board. So that means that the Budget Office has received um, operating and capital budget entries. We have scrubbed the numbers. Um, double checked with the offices and then now we're submitting that information to the clerk so that we can by RCW. Get you those budget requests um, by September third. And that is by RCW thirty-six forty zero fifty. Um, I have put, um, because the midterm is supposed to be um, not as involved as a two-year budget. Development, there are just two right now scheduled budget work sessions for September ninth and eleventh. With you for your review. Um, and then September twenty-third and twenty-fifth is just two days to have presentations for any of those departments or offices who have requests that you would like to get additional information. I have scheduled two days on the calendar in September for that. Um, after their presentations for October seventh and ninth, two days for preliminary final decisions. Um, so these would be your decisions that I would use to build the preliminary budget that gets published by November eighteenth. And that is by statute that that is um, published by that date. On that day also is when um, a notice for the public hearing will be ran. So that's gonna be November eighteen and the twenty-fifth. Um, stating that we will be having um, our hearings on December second and third. And these are also governed by state law. This would be our revenue hearings and our expense hearings. Um, December fourth and fifth, after those hearings is what's scheduled for um, final deliberations. So any changes that you'd like to make to the budget. Um, before we adopt it. By state law, we have to certify the property tax by December fifteenth. Um, these dates are draft dates, but based on when certain days fell, the fifteenth was a Sunday. Um, I picked December tenth here and then adoption on December seventeenth.
This is a little different than usual because the. The December dates fell in an odd way. So when we looked at the calendar. Usually the board would adopt the budget on a Friday. About two weeks after the um. The public hearings. But that Friday would have been December twentieth. So it's falling really late in the year. And so instead Nicole has scheduled budget adoption. For the board meeting on Tuesday, December seventeenth. Um, and then that will become your last meeting of the year. Before the boat board goes on winter recess. Beginning December eighteenth. Instead of keeping you here until the twentieth.
And I know when I need to book out my.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. I'm very excited that it's not falling on my birthday this year. Being in commissioner deliberations for my birthday was. It's not the fun. It's been three years in a row.
So what was mentioned is during um, after that, there is an amendment three, right? And then that is twenty twenty-five's first amendment. Change. And then there is a closing out of twenty twenty-five. So here is amendment three and amendment four, and it follows the same. Time frame as the first amendment one. Schedule.
But what it doesn't show is that concurrently. Through all of this, you are in the process of developing the twenty-six, twenty-seven. So there's a lot going on.
In twenty-five.
In twenty twenty-five during amendment four.
Um. I think my only request is. I think a reminder for all of us to. Know what's exactly accepted in the midterm adjustment, because I know some thought, sometimes. Things get slipped in, right? And then we have this full conversation on like, oh, is this, and so. As a reminder, like to all the commissioners on like. We should really not be considering this because we're not considering it for any other department or office. And I know staff is really good about like setting those boundaries as well, but I think. Um. Having that list for all of commissioners as we start having these budget conversations closer to the date, um. I'm sure if you give it to us now, uh. Won't do much good, but like. As we're maybe those basic reminders, this is what we're considering for the midterm adjustment. Would be good for all of us, um.
Yes, we can provide a list to follow. So I know there's some other issues that we'll need to discuss about what should be included in the amendment. I know there was some talk about um. Reclassifications and things like that. So we'll need to discuss that and. Determine what if that should be on the list or not on the list. That's all I have for you today.
So we do generally have a work session with the board on. What's going to be allowed in it, you know, for consideration. And I'm just looking because usually we write that. Into our budget instruction.
I'd have to double check that.
It says it, but I don't like the reallocation. Piece is so specific based on what happened at the end of last year that that wouldn't be in there.
Yeah. I do believe it says that you can't request that it doesn't include new FTE and things like that, but I don't know if it dresses the reclass.
I'm looking at the budget instructions right now. Because we try to make it clear to offices and departments. From the very get-go. Now that. That is not to say that they read. The budget instructions, but.
But I think we should, as a board, we need, we need to enforce those rules, right?
I agree. Because that's what sets a fair playing field. Is everybody playing by the rules.
I do have another question in regards to uh, something that was uh, talked about at one of our retreats and I believe it was Commissioner Klaus. Uh, Klaus's suggestion, which was to. Probably this code, it's not redeveloping, but um. We're looking at how we do our budget. Um. I'm I'm looking at you since it was your suggestion. Uh, seeing if you're, not to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I vaguely remember. I don't remember the phrasing that I used, but.
It was on our list and I'm just wondering, since, you know. We're gonna get a chance to do it this year, since next year is when we're actually going to start. A whole new budget process and. This year will probably be a good year to have that discussion as a board and with the budget team on like, are we going to restructure our budget and? Which way are we going to do it? And just kind of seeing all these deadlines and seeing everything you have to, I'm like, when can we actually fit it in?
So may I, or did you?
Oh, the only thing I was gonna say, I think it was restructure or reassess, one of those, but I think it was maybe restructure.
The budget process?
The budget.
When we had our retreat.
How we do our budget, yeah.
Yeah, the process.
It was on the whiteboard.
Streamlining.
Yeah. Streamline the budget.
I think it was that, it was.
What was the issue you were trying to get to?
Oh, um, I think it was just. I think when I mentioned it, I was like, hey, I'm new here. I don't know if this is something we need to look at because I wasn't here for last year's budget process. And I was thrown in right before we had to approve it. And I was like, I have so many questions. And so. I threw it out there as a suggestion based on, like, I don't really. Know the process because I haven't been through it, but I just threw it out there because I know that there's always ways to improve. And this is one of our biggest. Roles as commissioners, you know, to look at the budget process. So I just threw it out there as a possibility.
And I remember Robin agreeing. With that, just being like, oh, yeah, no, it's it's time that we actually relook at, you know, our our process and see like.
How we approach it.
How we approach it. And um. I know there were different structures that were tried before, like there was a one point that were like the law and justice partners were getting together.
Right.
Like, so I just think that.
Having them work together to come up with.
Yes, yes, we did uh, we did prior to COVID, we did a few rounds of um, priority-based budgeting. Um, we've looked at. Uh, different variations on. Um, zero-based budgeting, never implemented any of that. Uh. But we could certainly pull out the different budget methods. And bring that to you. Over the next few months. Um. We'll have regular budget meetings. One, we can go over all of these laws that pertain to the budget. One, we can talk about all the different kinds of processes there are if the board's interested in trying any of those again. Um. It will, will bring different ideas to you. But. The time to think about when to implement that will be next year. This year, we just wanna get through the midterm.
I think having a conversation on it, kind of setting a plan at least, because. We're gonna start on it next year, right? And then we're gonna have, be having that conversation then. It's just not gonna be.
You don't wanna start that conversation in February or March. You wanna know where you're going.
What I've learned is that you have like. There's this constant push and pull between. Want a process that treats everyone the same. But the different departments and offices are so different in the, in in their function and structure and funding that. If you do. If you, if you have a totally consistent process, you get unintended consequences and seem. And then, so then if you break that down, you start, you know, really digging into each group and then then you get attacked for, well, you didn't treat us this, you know, you don't. Your process isn't the same. So you can never have it both ways.
Yeah.
And finding that sweet spot between. A pretty fair set of processes that seem objective to each department and office, but yet not. Unfairly burdening one that has a different funding model, structural model than another is something that's just. It's really just like a dog chasing its tail round and round. And it's just a matter of like where you want, like where you feel like you, you're gonna get criticized. Significantly in either way, it's just a matter of what kind of criticism you're more comfortable with. And what you think is the. There's no perfect solution.
Yeah, I, and I'm sitting here thinking too, like as we're having this conversation. Of course, we wanna take care of staff and we wanna e- ensure that each department is treated fairly, but then as commissioners. What is our role in balancing like? The needs of the departments and the staff versus like the needs of the community, because sometimes those might not be the same. So I mean, I guess that's the kind of stuff I'll learn with time, but. Um, if I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that now, it'd be cool to kind of just hear what people have to say about that. I mean, what do, what do you, as commissioners, what should we be prioritizing when? The needs of the departments don't align with what the community feels they need. Like, how do you balance that?
There's never enough revenue.
Yeah.
It's not usually the departments.
So I can definitely present different ways of budgeting that could help with that question. Um, for instance, one way of budgeting is to look at the priorities that you um, find are necessary within, say, your district and the entire county. And then not looking at it at a specific office or department. But more along the lines of what goal you're trying to achieve in the county. And then. Adding the money and resources to those goals and then those departments who are impacted by your priorities set by your strategic. Goals in the county would get the funding to do that. In this way, you're not picking one department over another, but you're growing um, the county in a way that you collectively see fit. And then you would put resources behind those goals to make those things achieved. So that's one way of budgeting. And so at these different meetings, like at the meetings that Robin's speaking to, that I've come before you, I can bring those different options to you. Um, give you examples for other counties and cities who are using those goals and what things they were able to achieve. Using those different budget uh, budget processes. And then you can decide collectively which way you'd like to do the next biennium.
And there's different ways to solicit those or define what those priorities are. Um, and I'm thinking that it is balancing act or one of the two that where you can, you can create surveys of sorts. Uh, for the community and kind of push that out and and solicit some of what are the community priorities? What do they see? Is it housing? Is it um? Law enforcement, you know, what are, what are those hot button issues? And I think they also have sort of, if you have. X amount of dollars to spend, how would you divide that dollar up?
Right, yeah.
So it really kind of gives you that proportional kind of value.
We called that one, we did that one and we said play commissioner.
Yeah.
You know, make the budget decisions. Where would you make reductions? Where would you, what would you fund? And then we got, we could see the comments that people left and see what people chose based on the um, decision package, the change requests that were put in. By the departments.
It was funny, none of this stuff, so. But Tom tried it out and uh. It was funny, it was the year that we had the one point nine million dollar increase for insurance and he was like, well, I don't wanna do that. And it's like, well, we have to.
What you're keen on is the central. Difficulty of this job, which is that we're responsible to run, to run this bureaucratic machinery and it has all these internal needs. That that you become intimately familiar with and you wanna do your job and you wanna meet those needs to make this governmental apparatus work better. But. The people in the external that we're also responsible to are voters and constituents. They don't know, they may not care and they certainly don't know about it.
Yeah.
You know, and so. You know, so there's only limited, you know, so if we have, if we have a million dollars to spend. I'm sure that Mary Hall and John Toonheim and you know, Jennifer Walker will give us all sorts of great ideas how to spend that. If we spend it just the way they say, and then we go out to our community, you're gonna hear, why didn't you spend it on all these other things? You know, things that, you know, a great example is just climate change. Not a single person is ever cut, ever inside of our government, ever came to me and said, spend some money on a climate program and a climate. Change coordinator and all these other projects. But every time I go out to the community, that's what I hear people want money spent on. So how do you? How do you bridge that gap when there's such limited funds?
Yeah.
And that's, you know. Commissioner Fournier.
I, I just kind of wanted to comment the same way, like when, when you're doing, you have to start out with the needs. And that, you know, that's where you base a lot of your decisions is you have to figure out what the half twos are. And then if you're lucky, you're able to cover those half twos. And when it comes to like organizational change and, you know, like. You, you know, when you're, when you're looking at budgets, you never want to or get the opportunity to like throw the whole thing out and start over, like that's not a fun situation. So you've gotta consider a lot of history. And how they've been built and how money's been spent in the past. Cause you know, organizational change, it it needs to happen over time. It doesn't just happen in one budget cycle. So you gotta. Figure out the art of influencing bureaucracy if you wanna make change.
Okay, any other top six? Oh, should I bring up the, the reclass issue that I brought up yesterday since Robin's here? It kind of connects.
See where we're at.
So just yesterday, Commissioner Items, I thought you were gonna be here, so I was sort of, and so. I was just trying to understand where we are on that issue, because just to give the summary of where I think the history was. At the end of the budget process, we had a lot of requests. We didn't have money for them. We said, well, let's try to grant the really cheap ones, basically, if it's gonna help the departments work better and not cost us too much. But then that became a slippery slope and we ended up saying, okay, we're not gonna do them. We're gonna talk about how to handle them in a more. In a more consistent way after the first of the year.
Right.
That conversation, to my knowledge, hasn't actually happened. We've seen a few reclasses come up on the budget, on the, on the agendas, and we've been approving them just like we always did, kind of ad hoc. But then when I had my sit down with the Public Works Director, she said, well, I'm being told by HR, no reclasses right now until the board. So that that those are frozen until the board discusses X, Y, or Z. Is that what the board directed? And and I was confused how to answer that, because I said, well, yeah, we did kind of direct that at the end of last year, but. Yet then things have been piping, coming through the seams, so I don't want people to be told different things.
Right.
How are we dealing with that kerfuffle we had at the end of twenty twenty-three about reclasses?
Right, so. Part of the conversation, I'd been talking. Right. So part of the conversation, I'd been talking to Maria and Tara, who were working on a, how do we bundle these things? Um, because part of it is entangled in the what are we doing with the comp class study? A lot of the um, reclassifications that you saw in the budget were a reaction to the um, lack of clarity of the implementation of the comp and class study. Um, it was hard to sort those out. Um, and then we talked about potentially just this year, starting to go back to our what I'm gonna call our normal practice. Uh, once HR reviews them, have them come to the board. Uh, if the officer department's willing to absorb. But I've seen in this last few months a crazy number of TPIs, um, temporary pay increase uh, requests that are dependent on the classifications being addressed. So Rob let me know, me and Maria know that this come up yesterday. We're gonna sit down and chat about it. But a lot of it is tangled up in the what are we doing with the comp class study?
Maybe that's the discussion that I, that we were talking about.
That is the discussion that we need to have. Are we gonna do something with that or not?
Yeah, and it's not.
If we are, we need to decide what.
Not getting any pressure, so we need to have that discussion.
Yeah. That's gotta get on the schedule.
We're going to get together on the twenty first and then it's, we're calendaring the deeper conversation for one of the future planning sessions.
Right.
March people.
So we're working on it. We've we've been noodling on it and don't have a clear answer yet.
Okay, and it wasn't clear to me what. I guess if we see reclasses on our agendas, if we can kind of explain to the, we understand why this one's coming through
Right.
versus other ones, because I don't have, I get caught flat footed and I don't know how to answer that too.
Ones that you've seen so far have been put forward by HR as not related to the comp class study. And um, the usually the position is vacant and we need to address it. So those are the ones who've come forward today.
Addressing a vacancy and not connected to class and comp.
Unable to be absorbed in the current.
From a budget standpoint, I would enjoy a conversation with the board about absorbing reclasses. Um, I know that the current policy or practice is to absorb it within the first year. And if that is capable, then um, that is something that you you approve. I'd like to discuss with you that impact long term. And that the next fiscal year, we are now um, going to have to cover that absorption that they no longer are absorbing. Throughout the year, you are making budget decisions that are impacting your current year, the year that you're trying to plan for. So when twenty twenty six comes up and you're looking to see how much funding you have available to be able to do new programs, you've made those decisions throughout the year with reclasses that they're not intended to absorb long term. Um, with the new system, I am meeting ERP, I'm finding ways to be able to capture that so that you can clearly see how much what that impact is, is to doing those reclasses throughout the year and how that changes your decisions that you can make in the upcoming biennium. Um, so just wanted to know that.
Right. There was a year when Romero and I tried to restrict all uh, reclassifications to the budget cycle. And that did not work. That was, that was um, not only extremely unpopular with offices and departments, but it just, it wasn't feasible. Because people are working out of class
Yeah.
and you have to address that. You can't just wait.
So I have prior experience at other municipalities where they've done reclasses different ways and I can present those ideas before you too, so you can consider those um, along the whole of the entire budget process.
I think it's the one thing, piggyback on that, that the legislature, while they totally underrepresent the cost to local jurisdictions and they never have a good fiscal note for that, they do have a practice about making budgets and and having to balance their budget for several bienniums. It's kind of the same idea. If you're making a decision now, it's not just the near term look, but what are those out years and those potential impacts?
Right. But the state of Washington also only has one amendment. And that's it. And when you do that amendment, uh, biennial amendment, you fix the ensuing year. Um, the, it, there is none of the quarterly or twice a year adjustments. There are no reclasses in between. It's all part of the budget at the state. The state also has unfunded FTEs, which has been a concept that's come forward for the county. Um, that quite frankly, I I think has a downside at a county level. I had hundreds of unfunded FTEs when I worked in DSHS. They they were just there and I could move them around and reclass them. That was totally within the purview of the agency. If I had enough appropriation authority to fill them, I could, but I knew I didn't, so I didn't. Uh, and that's not the practice of the county. So, I mean, there's a lot of things we could talk about.
Okay, thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Good on budget topic. Let's go to, next up is legislative briefing.
And there's no way the legislative briefing can be nearly as riveting as budget schedules, so I apologize for that in advance. Um, we are getting close to the end of this uh, short legislative session. It uh, should go Senate eye tomorrow. Um, if all goes well, and so things are really kind of falling off the list and and the bills that have not made it out of their policy committees, fiscal committees, were being passed out of the opposite chamber are are dying. Um, so, but all in all, we've done fairly well. I'm I won't necessarily take time to go through the the spreadsheet itself, but just to call out a couple of highlights. Uh, one of those, um, so the capital budget uh, has been, uh, they've reached agreement on a capital budget. Uh, the downside, there is nothing for me processing, so are we will have to revisit again uh, that request in which will probably be a better capital budget ask will be at the beginning of the next biennium. The second piece is that uh, was good, is that the Veil Road uh, five oh seven roundabout is now fully funded. So that's really helpful for us since uh, we were fairly firm in the, from the get go, that if it wasn't fully funded, uh, we wouldn't start work on it. But we have that as our, part of our capital CIP. Um, so as soon as we can go get the agreements in place with the wash dot local programs, that we'll be able to start that timeline. Which will take probably a couple of years to make that happen.
Can we send a thank you letter to Representative Barkis? Because he he really went to that for us on on this and
Yes.
He did a lot of work with our staff at Public Works for this, just as, just to keep him on our graces at the boards.
Yes, along with the new timeline. Uh, that basically we will revise the timeline based on whenever we can reach an agreement or sign those contracts with uh, local programs. It's probably, you know, twenty four plus months after that. But we definitely want to start closely with him and appreciate the support. Um, the other piece um, is related to the proviso for um, well, the NCS proviso that we were tracking, um, started off with an initial ask of thirty four million, made it into the House capital budget at twenty five originally, and in the process of reconciling, there was nothing in the Senate. It's now down to fifteen million. Um, and it's it's better than nothing, but not ideal. Um, in that it is contingent in many ways. Uh, there there are new constraints placed on it. It is contingent upon the initiative that will be going to the voters on November related to the Climate Commitment Act. Um, if that goes down, then these dollars go away. So this, it's, we really won't know the outcomes for several months to come. Um, and the way they also wrote this, um, Thurston County was stood to really have the the most gains um, related to this, but I just wanted to share with you some language out of the proviso. Because in some ways, it ties to the letter that we just received from DNR asking for a proposal by October for what lands and where the conservation should be specifically. So before conserving any forest land pursuant to uh, section AI of this subsection two, the department must receive letters nominating specific parcels issued by the legislative authority of the county in which the forest land is located and the approval of the conservation parcel's boundaries by the Board of Natural Resources. And no instance may timber with a forest practice application approved prior to March fifth of twenty twenty four uh, be considered for nomination. County parcel nominations and board approval pursuant to this process must be finalized prior to the transfer of the forest land pursuant to this section. Nothing in this subsection prohibits the conservation of up to two hundred and sixty acres of structurally complex, carbon dense forest land in Thurston County. So it's interestingly written, um, and definitely some some barriers there, but uh,
Just for information, I think he got the most signatures out of the six that were gathered.
Oh, really?
I was kind of surprised. I thought police pursuit would get them. Anyway, just point of interest.
Oh, the, you mean the Climate Commitment Act one, okay. Um, and related to that, um,
Can I ask since um, about like what that would mean for some of our struggles with DNR and kind of where that leaves us?
I probably couldn't opine on that at this point in time. Um, it does create barriers, um.
That fund has created more money than they anticipated. So there's not gonna be much left if it, if that goes through, if that goes down.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
It it basically means because they did not, um, I mixed up the names of the
Cabbage and carrot.
Cabbage and carrot. And so anything with an active forest practice application as of yesterday
So then that
is not under consideration for a conservation.
And how many, I mean, I don't know the timing of when people submit forest practice applications. I mean, Commissioner Fornier handed me a stack of like twelve planned cuts. Are those all to the, would those all be considered as having a forest practice application?
I think the schedule is potentially separate from the application, but I have not looked into that.
Okay, well, then maybe I was confused. I thought maybe.
I don't know the scope of how, what that means. I don't know how early those get filed.
I, I don't know. It depends on, I'm I'm more used to some private timber companies than I am with DNR.
I have, I mean, I had a long meeting with this uh, a group that, one of the groups that does the mapping and they created in in response to this BNR, they're watching the BNR meetings more carefully than I am. And in response to that repeated suggestions that we have a plan, they put a proposed plan together for us. I mean, I don't know if we want to adopt it. I mean, I, we can't, we don't have any county, I don't know what else to do, because we don't have county resources to go out and redo that work. Um, I didn't do it myself, but uh, I've seen the work that they do and I I'm inclined to trust the the information that they provide me, but they've got a plan saying exactly where we don't want it cut. And and they've, they've added up the number of acres that are ready, that are outside of those, you know, areas that would be, are ready for to timber harvest. And it's more than, it's it's far more than enough to meet fifteen years' worth of Thurston County's projected board feed for beneficiaries. So there would be, it would be two decades at a minimum before any beneficiaries would be affected. Now, specific beneficiaries might be affected because we're talking about specific acres. But we're in no position, that that's what really concerned me about that letter when it said, well, you need to make sure that benefi, I mean, I could tell you that beneficiaries will be made whole in the aggregate over time, but I don't have any ability to go every little, you know, scrappy parcel, that particular set of beneficiaries that's connected to those few acres. I I, we're not in any position to
To provide that level of analysis.
Yeah, to to plug, to have a plan to plug all those holes. I mean, I'm looking at it at a high level, you know, as long as where I'm looking, I mean, because it's, it's frankly ridiculous that anything is funded based on a connection to a particular, you know, I mean, if you were gonna do this at all, I mean, let's be real. If you were gonna do this at all, it should all be done the way that, as I understand, the common school is where you just throw, you cut the trees, you throw it into a pot and you divvy up the money, right? I mean, that's, that's not a great way to do it, but it's at least logical. It's completely illogical to say that, well, if this school district is connected to older trees, they're gonna get more funding than some other school districts that's connected to younger trees. And that's, that's nonsense. So I'm not even gonna engage in that. This has to be looked at at a high level and if and if we're trying to keep beneficiaries whole, then we need to make sure there's enough timber to be cut of a, of a less, you know, important conservation priority that keeps the dollar, the same aggregate dollar amount intact. That's as far as I'm willing to go with it, because A, I don't think we have the ability to go any farther and B, I don't think there's any, there's any logic to that.
Would there be benefit then for us scheduling whomever to provide a briefing to the board? About sort of what that process was, how they developed their map?
Yeah, let's do that.
I'll need contact.
Yeah, I got everything you need. You guys should see what I saw and then you can decide what we ought to do.
So, kind of tangentially related to that is a request from DNR uh, for a potential letter of support. Um, and this relates to their potential, their pilot of leasing land for affordable housing. Uh, so the the budget did not get passed. It was in the governor's budget. Nothing survived. And so, but they were, they did get their house bill two thousand and three passed that exempts sites from leasehold excise tax for affordable housing. So they were just wondering if the board would consider providing a letter of support for grants that they might pursue to support that project, given that this, the legislature.
Didn't we already write a letter of support for the concept of what they had in mind?
They needed two pieces and they got one, they didn't get the money part.
Yeah.
So now they're gonna be looking for the money.
Going to go out for grants now.
Why wouldn't we follow through with that?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything.
Okay, so we will, we'll get a a letter developed for your your review. Um, let's see, what else of note? Those were probably the the big items. Um, my hope for next week is to try to bring back a high level synopsis of really a sort of the, now that the budgets are being passed, kind of how all the dust settles out on those and what potential new opportunities, new revenues or potential lost revenues there could be, um, that might impact the counties.
When does governor sign things that are like Board of Health expansion?
Uh, well, that one was signed, so that bill fifty nine seventy was signed by the President of the Senate on February twenty eighth and then by the Speaker of the House on February twenty ninth. So it's on its way to the governor. Um, I believe there's generally a five day um, for early bills and then the later in the session, then he gets to twenty day.
Is it a ninety day deal or does it take effect immediately?
I don't think there's any provision in that one that there is a delayed um, implementation upon signature, then it should be codified in RCW.
Can you remind me, do we have a certain amount of time to get in compliance with, or I can't remember the structure of what we do?
No, it's it's totally permissible.
It's up to us.
It's up to us. So you can get passed, you could do nothing. Or you take the time and my recommendation would be to take the time to be thoughtful about, if not this, then what? Because there's opportunities right now, specifically, we're going a little tangential, but um, you know, we have a rotational city seat. There could be if we reduce the commissioners on the Board of Health, does it make sense to provide permanent uh, city seats so we don't have to worry about the rotation and appointments?
That doesn't take care of the fact that, I mean, the whole thing was to try to reduce, like, the Board of Health not have as many people, right, on it. And if we do that, then we're just gonna be replacing it with other people. not have as many people, right, on it. And if we do that, then we're just going to be replacing it with other people and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, the other, the other alternative is just to like phase it in once our initial citizen folks fill their term.
Yeah.
And then you drop back to the eight. Then the commissioners would have to stay on until then. Is that right? Because they'd have to be, the way it's worded, you can't have unequal numbers. Because there's two different provisions that.
But don't talk to each other.
Yeah. So you'd have to just kind of, if we want to get to eight, we have to wait a year, basically. And if we want to immediately change it, we could flip two of the commissioner's seats into two city seats. So those are kind of the two most obvious options. But then we'd be at twelve permanently, basically.
Right. I think is, you know, what's, is the overarching goal that not all commissioners have to be, are obligated to be on the Board of Health? Is that the number one goal? Because is it, or is it the, the size and the operations? But if we look at effective subcommittee structure or committee structure of it, then you may want more bodies to be able to help divvy that up. So there's, there's pros and cons to explore.
I thought the goal was to reduce because it was too big. Like, that was, I thought the overarching goal was.
Talk about like you could go to a quarterly Board of Health meeting and then subcommittees or something?
Good. It's, it's up to you all.
If you had the twelve to actually do real, you know, it's not like, and the electeds are, it's just, you know, it's kind of been a little bit awkward, like we've had the finance subcommittee, you know. The electeds are overextended, but the citizens are, have jobs and, you know, they're not, they don't necessarily have more time either, so it's been hard to. More flexibility with more people. But anyway, okay, so that's something we have time to work on once we. I didn't want to, if there was a time element, I want, and, and we're pretty sure it's going to pass, it's like, well, why don't we just get the conversation rolling? But it sounds like we maybe have a little more time.
Oh, yeah, I think it's. We structured it permissible.
Will we pass?
Will we pass?
And that's to the governor?
Mm-hmm. So that's a, a good one as well.
I think it is. What else? I saw that the three, three of the six, like initiative-related ones got addressed by the legislature. Police pursuit and parental notification and. Forget the third one, but.
So the.
Rental rights.
The two million for Tumwater did get through for their HCP funding, so.
It did. Great. I've not been tracking that one.
Got an email about it.
Commissioner Fornia, did you, whatever happened to, to Nino Sandstone?
It died.
Okay.
We'll fight, it'll be a fight again next year.
Just checking, because it didn't get any, didn't know what other, uh,
Can I ask?
Negotiations were occurring behind the scenes.
Oh, there's some, there's some things going on. Hot and heavy.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So Senator Hunt's farewell speech is tomorrow at one. I, I will not be able to attend.
Where's it at in?
Yeah, it's going to be in the south, in the Senate Gallery. Or in the Senate Chamber.
So if you want to attend, you're up in the gallery?
Yeah, so they will reserve space in the South Senate Gallery, or you can also watch it on the TVW for those who can't be there. I think it'd be great, again, I almost, also with a thank you card, maybe some flowers. Senator Hunt has helped us with a lot of our bills, including fixing the language specifically last year. That's what I worked on with him for our five commission transition and fixing those kind of.
State-funded elections. He was thinking key on that one.
And then, yeah, the state-funded elections and then, and then this year with the Board of Health. So just as, you know, a county just thanking him for his service and kind of the work that he's done for and helping us as well as a county.
Is anyone available to?
I'm not.
I have, have, we were stuck with the DHS.
Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Let me excuse, I've got a, a subcommittee meeting, Capcom. Go for it. I could move my one, but I have a two o'clock that I have to be at back here, so I don't know how.
They said.
Timely they're going to.
This is what, they said it would be after flag, pledge, and vocation. I don't know.
I could try.
So just putting it out there in case someone wants to or is able to attend.
But we could definitely, I mean, like I say, if it's probably more important that we send something.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, he's not going to necessarily see me there.
Yeah.
A lot of people are on TV and stuff like that.
Refrain from like bending over the, the gallery railing and.
Thanks.
I want you to follow.
Okay, well, anything else that we need to?
No, no, I think it's, you know, it is coming to a very, it's a short session, coming to a very quick. The last month has been fast and furious, but hopefully we'll be able to suss out some of the, the key budgetary impacts revenue or expenditure-wise for next week.
When is Deborah going to come in and try to do a debrief?
Oh, yeah, that's always good.
So we can schedule something where she'll be able to breathe a little bit more. Maybe, maybe for next week's. Would you like it a little bit further out?
One of her recommendations last year, and I think it's, it was a worthwhile recommendation, is that we actually start thinking of our legislative priorities earlier than.
Well, we had like, we had the idea of a pet tax, right?
Yeah.
But it's like, that needed to be, like, there's a whole process, like, if, if there's not a bill already drafted, you have to get, you know, you have to get that process started to get a bill drafted and then, then you need to, then you have something in hand to go with legislators and get sponsors and go through that, but that really needed to happen like now.
And, and so that is, we have commitments that it will be taken up during the interim. So we've kind of got that ball rolling already.
On that issue?
Yeah. Representative Berg and.
That was just an example.
Yeah.
Because that was one that came up and we were interested, but it was like too late to really get it going.
No, but you're right. We should be, I think that Romero had brought Deborah in July when I was gone. And then he was gone and.
It wasn't just last year. It's kind of been the routine where we usually address it so late in the year. We're putting a list together and.
We're, we're not the only ones, right? We get caught up in so many other things happening.
Yeah, there was a lot going on in the last year.
It's hard. You don't even know, like, your, there's, it was always, you can always have your priority list, but you know, you always kind of want to wait for the economic forecast so that you can sort of figure out, is the state going to be in a spending mood? Are they going to, is it more playing defense? Like not letting them cut because things don't look that good? Or is it offense, you know, because they've got money and we want to make sure we get it to our priorities? And you don't know those things until like the fall.
Yeah, but you can't wait for that. That's exactly why you cannot wait.
So I think maybe coming up with the wish list, right? And then putting that wish list out there and then as we get that economic forecast, just being like.
You refine your list.
We can refine our list. But I think some priorities are not going to. There's just needs that we just have that are.
Yeah, I think a lot of the same priorities that we have for this year will continue. We saw no action, no relief on Park M and L. There was, there's several different pieces of it.
But as an example, state agency legislation is due to the governor's office in September, early September.
And one thing I heard that it's better to do it through a state agency if you have a priority because then that way the state agency can promote it.
Local government has little standing. Yeah. If you can get it into state agency, request legislation, you kind of have to be working with the governor's policy advisors to ensure that it gets through, but you know, just as far as timing goes, that if you wait until the fall to contact the governor's office, you've, you've, you've lost the window. And you should be working by then with, if you're not going to go through the governor with the legislators to have sponsors for bills to get early filings.
So Tracy's here?
I, I was just, I was part of last year's governor's budget, putting it together. I can tell you that the agencies have to let OFM know in June if they're going to even have anything.
Yeah.
And then they had the first week in September. They have to have their, their paperwork in for, for whatever they're, they're proposing. But they start working on those usually a year in advance.
Yeah.
So there, there is no time that's too early as far as, as far as planning for, for writing a bill.
So just like the budget, you know, it never stops. It just goes from one year to the next. So does the legislative process. We will keep it alive.
Okay, then commissioner items. Do we have anything we need to discuss?
I did something cool earlier. I went to the Veterans Court graduation at District Court and it was awesome. Have you been? Have you seen one? Have you both seen one? It was really, really cool.
How many graduates?
There was one today. Yeah, so, but I'm glad there was only one because I was going to cry. So if there were more, I would definitely have cried. They almost stopped me. But it was like a beautiful ceremony and hearing his story, like so much of it resonated with me and my experience. And hearing, like, there were other people in the audience who participate in the program and they were moved by his testimony and like just hearing what all of the service providers and people who provide support to these individuals had to say, it was like really, it was really moving. So I'm glad to hear you've both been because I asked them, I was like, who else has been here? Because I'm going to tell them all like how cool it was. So, yeah, I'm really glad I got to do that.
I think I've been to vets court since twenty nineteen, my first year. I've been to a couple of drug courts after that. Yeah, I always tear up. Those are like stories and people are so willing to share their, like, stories, like, whoa.
I know. And, you know, the, was, is it called Stars and Stripes, the Quilts of Valor?
Yes.
I was thinking like when we do our Veterans Day proclamation or if we have, you know, whatever we do for Veterans Day, if we could have them come and talk and maybe they could even do a quilt and we could take a picture of it for our picture. I don't know, because they just do all of that volunteer. They've kind of carried the torch.
Graduate might be kind of cool.
That'd be cool.
If they're interested.
Yeah, something like that. But I'd be interested in working with District Court to see if we can maybe have a presentation from someone who is participating in that program, whether it's like on the service side or participant, because it was really cool. And I hear about Veterans Court all the time, but actually being there and seeing someone graduate after two years of being in the program and just how far they've come, like, that was really cool. So. And I think I'm going to be going to a mental health court graduation pretty soon here.
I have not been to mental health court graduation. I've been to drug court and vets court.
It was a part of the system, so I've been to all of them, but they're all, like, they're all so impactful. Like, they really, they really are. And we have great programs in Thurston County, great program managers.
Yeah.
People who run all of those, all of our treatment courts are really passionate about what they do and advocating for the people they're supporting. I, I'm constantly just impressed by the work they do.
That was really cool. Glad I got to go.
Anything else? Commissioner Fornia, anything you got?
Uh, no, I attended the Grand Mountain Chamber meeting earlier today. It was a good meeting. It was another presentation from the Watch Center for Women in Business, but then also Jenica and Matt were there and we gave an update on kind of what's going on at the county. Touched on the LTAC awards. We touched on money that's coming available for childcare facilities and then the docketing process.
I'm going to a super interesting thing. I think it'll be a super interesting thing tonight. It's related to a thing that's happening in my district, which is why I want to check it out. The state government is, or no, maybe the federal government is put, is applying some sort of like biological treatment in targeted areas, kind of in a Steamboat Island-y area to try to attack this moth, spongy moth, which is like some sort of a, something we don't want, apparently. Spongy moth is like, it's been present, it, it causes forest defoliation, which can lead to riparian damage and other cascading environmental effects. There have been spongy moth detections virtually every year since nineteen seventy-four, but due to an active summer detection trapping program, they were not ever established anywhere in the West. But now they've, there's been some, I won't go through all this, but there's been some more significant sightings or detections. And so now they're applying this. So this is like a community out, you know, before they sort of start spraying this stuff, which is not, which is some kind of biological agent, like not a, they're going to be giving an information session to explain to the community what it is, what the, you know, so I want to hear what people's questions are about it and just learn about it. Anyway, kind of interesting. I'll tell you guys what I learned next week.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Were they?
It's like Department of Agriculture.
They were imported or did they, are they native to another part of the country? Or did they come like the hornets that we, I mean, from elsewhere?
Okay. It says spongy moth has been present in North America since eighteen sixty-nine.
Okay, it's native.
But not in the West. And the problem is in twenty twenty-three, one hundred and three spongy moths, formerly known as gypsy moth. I guess that's, politically incorrect.
Okay, yeah, right. No, I definitely know that because living on the East Coast, yes, there was, there were always treatments.
Okay, well, that's, that's what they are. They were trapped. Seventy-seven of these spongy moths were caught in Thurston County near Steamboat Island Road out of the hundred and three in Washington. In addition, the Department, State Department of Agriculture discovered one spongy moth egg mass at this site, confirming the presence of a reproducing population. So there's a, there's a, the proposed eradication measures are expected to consist of at least three aerial spray treatments of the biological insecticide Baxillus, blah, 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 using a formulation approved for organic agriculture. So it's a naturally occurring soil bacteria that has an excellent safety record around people, pets, birds, fish, or bees. It is also commonly used in organic gardening or farming. So anyway, I'm just, it's interesting enough. I want to check it out. Out of Griffith Fire District, so.
It'll be fun. I have inner city on Fair Board tonight.
I never realized we were assigned a Fair Board. There was a commissioner assigned. Are you the primary now?
Yeah. I have a question about the Fair Board. The three youth at large positions that are vacant, you all are appointing tonight, aren't you?
Yeah, we're making recommendations tonight.
Um, I was looking at that and I was just curious, like, there are only three youth at large positions and all three of the youth that applied are from the same school. Do you, I mean, you probably might not be able to predict what's going to happen tonight, but is that something the Fair Board takes into consideration? Is like diversity of where people are located? Or is it like, we have three spots, we have three applications, let's fill all the spots?
Well, I, I don't know. This is like my first application process through the Fair Board, but I know how it's usually been in the past. At least from our level has been like, yay, there's someone applying because there was a large time where the Fair Board was just half-empty and there were all these positions open. And so anyone who was like wanting to volunteer for it, we were like, oh, yay, we have an applicant.
Especially kids and sometimes it's also like some, some schools have more robust like 4H programs. So it's kind of like natural that they're, they're come from certain schools, but it definitely, I mean, if we have, we definitely think about that on other committees when we have more applicants than spots, like spreading it around, making sure the rural areas are, are, are all covered and stuff, so that could be definitely considered.
For this, for the Fair Board at all.
Okay.
I'll see how, how they deliberate on those and what they consider. I'll be happy to report on that.
Awesome.
I'll be.
Next Tuesday during agenda setting.
Yeah, I'll be proposing my, I'll be proposing two ideas and one of them is the, Robin wasn't here. I did a community mural and they wanted to possibly do one in one of our county buildings and I thought the fair, the fair would be a great place to do a community mural and.
In a building?
One of our buildings. Amp it up and get more community buy-in into the fair and support.
Amp it up and get more community buy-in into the fair and support.
Okay, well, we have nothing further. Uh, we're adjourned.